Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council in public hearing number six? Declare the hearing closed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Muller. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Archibald. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Includes the public hearings. Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any item either on the agenda or under their jurisdiction, please come forward, give your name, and you have four minutes.
I have an inquiry concerning resolutions. When can you ask something about resolutions that are on the agenda?
Okay, what is it that you?
Is now the time? I don't want to-
If you have a question about it, yes, go ahead now.
Okay, I have a question about resolution number six, the charter amendment. I'm just wondering why an amendment is so soon? The charter hasn't been in place that long. And I'm also wondering why, if someone already connected with the city that was qualified for a job, an administrative job that came open, why that would be inappropriate? I just don't understand the amendment, so I would like explanation.
At that time, then it will be explained.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Good evening. I'm Shaka Saman, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a junior at Port Huron Northern High School, and I'm also the president of Port Huron Northern's Junior State of America Chapter. On November 1st, at 7:00 PM in the Port Huron Northern Performing Arts Center, the Port Huron Northern JSA will be hosting a debate between the three candidates for the mayorship of the city of Port Huron. It is a forum run like any other, but the difference in this debate is that all questions are student-based, and the debate, the purpose of it, is to raise student and teen involvement in politics and across the board, as well as mainly into local politics. Now, once again, this debate will be at 7:00 o'clock, and I'd like to invite all city council members, as well as any members of the audience, and anyone in the community as well. All questions will, once again, be asked by the students, and I see it as a fantastic opportunity for not only the city, but the students as well, to raise public awareness in politics and help the city out in general. Thank you very much, and thank you very-
Thank you.[176.23][176.23][applause]
Quick question, was it Sean?
Shaka.
Sean, all right. And what was the date? I missed that at the beginning.
November 1st.
November 1st.
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy Tuesday.
Thank you.
Tuesday, yes.[196.37][196.37][laughter]
I'm waiting to be invited.
I saw you coming.
I'm sorry. Good evening, Council, Mayor Rep. Thank you very much for your service, as always, sir, thankful job. I am here to address the idea put forward about the Blue Water Transfer Station. Just to be clear, I have not, nor will I condemn this as some sort of homeless hangout. With the proper security system surveillance, it will be as safe a place as any parking lot. My issue is with where. Why the south lot, not the north lot? North lot is rarely used. North lot is almost the same landmass in and around downtown Common. The busiest area is always the county building, courthouse, and the building we stand in, commonly referred to as MOC. For service to lofts, as is promoted, this only touches a small amount of them, and no doubt, yes, of course, the SC4 will benefit. Maybe, they do have areas to park, in the Quay Street Lot and in the south lot. Now, when I drive through there, there's never any cars in the north lot. There's always cars in the south lot, and there's always cars in the Quay Street Lot. I don't know if it's considered the Quay Street Lot, but that's what I always call Those students really don't have an issue with parking right now. My other issue is, how do we continue to pay for it? And does the free money pay all of the construction? By all means, if Washington is handing out money, take our share back. But in the long term, how does it say self-sufficient? Do we know that? We just read an article on the PeopleMover, a mass transit, which, by the way, I'm a big supporter of mass transit, and I really have said several times, and I've taken a lot of knocks, because people have said, you know, "We are Americans, and we want to go where we want to go, when we want to go." But mass transit, we really have to kind of start looking into that, because we can't afford our bridges and highways anymore. A mass transit idea that seemed great, wonderful on paper, didn't quite turn out quite so well. The PeopleMover right now is being considered to shut down. For every 50-cent rider, it costs the authority $3. Who and how will the upkeep be paid for in 10, 20, 30 years? My issue is, is the outside of St. Clair County, all of us are going to pay for it. I would like to also thank Councilwoman Fisher for liking this to cities like Berkey, I'm sorry, Berkey, West Virginia, or Kent, Ohio. Those were rather better comparisons than Sacramento, where many sports fans have known for many years, the city is in the throes of an agreement trying to be reached with the Kings of building them a $356-million arena to make them stay in where they're at. Enough on that. I say build it, if we can get the money, but where do we put it? Can we please have more time than two weeks to decide that? And I do apologize to many people that are friends, that belong to the Starlights Dance Club. On the resolutions, number four, it's saying recognizing Starlights Parents Club as a nonprofit, I have a hard time listening, and I marvel at the wonderful things that the United Way does as a nonprofit, and Lonny Stevens, how much they do. To liken the Starlights Parent Club to a nonprofit like the United Way, I think that there's a lot of dance studios in town, and I'm pretty sure that they would all like to be a nonprofit. I just don't understand how that can be considered a nonprofit, but thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I introduced myself. Did I?
You know, I don't remember, but I-[448.13][448.13][laughter]
I did not use up my four minutes, so I'll be quick, if that's all right, Donna Clune, Port Huron. I would like to, I'm not going to go into detail tonight, but I would like to respectfully suggest that Kim Harmer takes her Pride and Port Huron campaign to my neighborhood next year. It needs it in every aspect that she's mentioned, and those of us that would like to live in a neighborhood of civility would be more than appreciative.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Ken Harris. I live at 1521 Wall Street. First off, I'd like to discuss a candidate forum that happened on October 13th. First off, I'd like to take the exception to the fact that I was kind of, I felt your harassed after I made comments about the city's bidding process. I think as much as the city council members or incumbents take exception to the bid process, I tried to explain at that meeting, I also take, I take offense to what they, how they represented. If you look at the bid process, all you have to do is Chapter 2, 797 of the bidding process. Under the exceptions, the following purchase of goods, services shall be exempt from local bidder preference: emergency purchases, sole source purchases, cooperative purchases, request for proposal, bid solicitation, federal funding, and based on performance character, and bid solicitations that use lifecycle cost. If you further go on and you look at this ordinance as it was passed, it also, there's conditions for local businesses. The condition of this is if the bidder of the city-based business is premised upon the bid of the lowest bidder. Basically, what's that mean is if the city bidder is within 3% of the low bid, they have to match the low bidder's price. I don't think that gives any advantage to the City of Port Huron company that wants to bid for our products. If we're going to give a bid, I think that we have to be fair, and if it's a 1%, then let's give them that 1%. But I don't think we should disguise it on basically a thing that says they have to match the low bidder. I think one thing that kind of substantiate that, and it's kind of a conflict, in the same ordinance, if you go back to Section 2796, here it says also, it says two or more bidders are the lowest bidder, and determined to be a responsible and a responsive bidder, the successful bidder may be determined by lots. So it's kind of contradiction in what the other part says. It says if you have the same bidders, you draw by lot. The other thing I'd like to bring up, and I think it does affect the City of Port Huron, it goes back to the Blue Water Escavating versus State of Michigan. Commercial and government units' interest with respect to public contracts is to obtain and accept the lowest bid from contractors, which is financially responsible and otherwise competent. I think if we're going to have an ordinance, we have to have an ordinance that's ironclad, and we don't give exceptions that aren't within the law. Final comment, I got, like Mrs. Clune was saying, under resolution number six, I think we ought to change the name of that resolution. I think it should be the Kwame Muller Resolution. Thank you.[655.82][655.82][laughter]
Is there anyone else? Go ahead.
Mrs. Shirley Watts. As usual, I come to make statements, and hopefully to have inertia behind them.
What was your name?
Shirley Watts, Mrs. Shirley Watts. It's sad, when I come here and I see nobody from my neighborhood that I can recognize, because common council is so very important to the structure of your, of the citizenry of the town, enlightenment, strength, even course change. I do not depend on my representatives to represent me. I make sure that they are represented, because this is the American way. I have a few things left here. Not going to take too long, because I really don't have it, I must say, because I care and I dare. And if it upsets people, what I say, sometimes criticism, sometimes a blessing, but I will I would like to see, once again, Mrs. Knotts or her husband represented on that field. I would like for a sign to say who they are, they gave their land away, why, when? This is only respect. I would like to also say that I would like to have Dr. Ware represented, the first doctor we're going to get ethnically, but it's just history. It's a neighborhood's history, you know? And he was the first black doctor in South Park, MD, and Dr. Washington, first black dentist in South Park. You know, this is history, like Edison, this is history, you know? It may not mean a lot to some people, but you have different ethnicities here, and different things mean different things to them. Now, I'd like to see downtown, far as the yacht boat night, I hate it, has went downhill so badly. I hate that Port Huron downtown lacks luster, because I'm 62, and I remember when it did. I know what the problems are. And another thing I would like to say, I would like to ask, who are all on council? You know, beside, I know the mayor's on council, and I'd like to know, who are you, Mr. Muller?
He's our city manager. Everybody else is on council.
Okay, and the rest of the people are just voted in, regular council members?
Everyone is voted in except for Ms. Prin.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah, okay. That's very important to me. Reason why it's very important to me, because common council is a buffer between the people and the mayor. It really is. This is how you get your voice heard, you know? And like I say, I come to make a statement, and I hope it has inertia, and I'm going to make a statement whether blessed or criticized, I really don't care, you know, because the more we go forward, just like you're looking at Wall Street, oh, and I hate, I hope that this job gives some jobs, I really do. See, I worked at the Detroit Tank Plant, I understand certain things, you know, and I really hope it does something. Instead of take front of people, because the people here seem to need jobs, I retire. I get my money, pension, everything. Thank you.
Good evening, Monica McCarrio. I'm also here to talk about the bus transfer hub. I've heard both presentations. I was here last Monday, and I walked out of here with more questions than answers, which is actually my fault, because I didn't ask too many. But I did take a minute, and I did look at the .gov site, and according to that, it says that it needs to be centrally located downtown. It's pretty open language. Port Huron's this big, central location is whatever we say it is. So the McMorn lot isn't required to fulfill that grant, and that kind of is my sticking point, putting in the McMorn lot. Councilmember Archibald made a really excellent point. She said if we're going to give away a piece of property, which is truly what we're doing, we're giving it away to the BWTA, that we should give it to a private investor who then could take over, you know, maintenance of the lot, build something, and later give us some tax revenue, and maybe even a few jobs. So I do also understand, and what I've been hearing, is that a convenience factor is a part of this. It's convenient to downtown, it's convenient to the lofts, it's convenient to McMorn. Well, the whole thing is, though, it's a parking structure with a bus transfer point attached to it, so you park, you get on a bus, and you conveniently find yourself within steps of McMorn, downtown, and then the lofts. But I think my biggest concern, when I was going back over this, was the actual cost. I understand we're getting the money from the government, I'm talking about the cost for parking. I'm saying build it, build it somewhere else, so don't misunderstand that. But we don't know how much it's going to cost to park there. Nobody's mentioned that. And I remember just a year ago, when this city management, and you city council members, told all of us that the reason that we had such low parking revenue for the 2010 Blue Water Fest, it's fest, not festival, anyhow, our city management said to us that members of this community know where to find free parking. And we have to recall that on that particular day, we didn't have McMorn to go park in. In fact, you councilmember Muller, and you mayor Rep., you two agreed-
Wait a minute.[1064.23][1064.23][laughter]
It didn't fall in, but Mr. Clay, could you check it for cracks?[1069.63][1069.63][laughter]
Cut her mic off, because I know she's not telling the truth, no, Mayor.
I really couldn't resist after the last couple of weeks of you guys agreeing so often. So I'm really sorry. But seriously, both of you said you found free parking that night. And city management told us that members of this community know how to find free parking. When I went by McMorn tonight, I saw four people going out of their way to find free parking. Two of them crossed over Pine Grove and then walked back. Tonight, they're charging a dollar. What concerns me about that is that this five-story parking structure isn't going to be self-sustaining, and sooner or later, our mileage will go up, or we'll need more grants, and unless this community has Miss Michigan pageants, or Silver Sticks, or Blue Water Festivals, 365, what we're going to end up having is five stories of pretty close-to-empty parking structure. Sorry.
John Muldowne, 518 Rawlings, City of Port Huron.[1160.01][1160.01][sighs] That's a question mark. Question. Four months ago, I came here in this very spot to talk about the boardwalk. A lady, one of my customers, a lady from Texas, was pushing her daughter in a wheelchair, enjoying this beautiful view that we have, that we all call home. And upon walking, pushing her daughter down the boardwalk and enjoying this beautiful view, she came a spot on the cement, where the cement was here, and the next block was up here. Enjoying the beautiful scene, she almost threw her daughter out of the wheelchair. I brought this up to city council four months ago. Nothing has been done about it. Now, this past weekend, again, there goes our tax dollars, we're supporting Marine City, Owasso, Croswell, tax dollars that go out the door and will never see the light of day, because we don't hire small business within our community to support this community. So those tax dollars turn over 10 times full. So a company shut down the boardwalk on probably the last nice weekend. Why on the weekends beyond me? That should have been done during the week, that's common sense. Families that work all week, they want to enjoy the boardwalk, walk their dog, their families ride a bike, stroll in a wheelchair down the boardwalk. But instead, a company came in, six gentlemen, three vehicles, took them all day to caulk every 25 yards, and they put caution tape from the grass to the railing, so nobody could enjoy the boardwalk this past weekend. I want to thank you very much, and I'm speaking for the tourists, the townspeople, and those poor little guys with the four-legged. Like I say again, our tax dollars are being thrown out the window. And here's another thought of the day. 300 garbage trucks come over the bridge from Canada every day. 2,100 a week, 9,000 a month, over 100,000 a year. And we talk about going green. That's enough to bury the City of Port Huron. It's possible that we could build a facility here to recycle that garbage, and it would create a lot of jobs, but it would take a community coming together. You know, this, we have several, two or three different garbage sites in our surrounding areas, Smith's Creek, 29 and Grass, and I believe there's another one toward the north end somewhere. Now, we have the largest resource of fresh water in the world. Are we going to sit here and turn our heads and jeopardize this fresh water that's going to be there for generations to come, our children's children's? We must think for our future. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council?
It's about the bus garage. Oh, Margaret Enright, Port Huron, Michigan, and it is about this bus garage. I don't care what you say about building it, that's probably going to happen, but I don't think it should be on any waterfront property. I don't care if it's a creek bed, a lake, a river, or an ocean. You know waterfront property is a priority, and it's always higher-priced. Put a high-rise there, something that's going to bring a tax base in, not something that's going to be sitting empty most of the time, or charging a small fortune to park there. As they said before me, everybody goes round and round the block looking for a free spot to park, no matter what's going on at McMorn. So I just don't see it ever being full, and God only knows how much it's going to cost to park in there, or how much it'll cost the homeless to sleep in there next to a heating grate. You know that'll happen, because they do it at the senior homes. At the senior centers, the outside doors are always unlocked, so they can come and go, but the homeless go in and lay in the hallways and sleep there, and I know this for a fact. And I don't want it to happen at the bus garage, because I don't think it'll be policed very well. But most of all, I don't want it on waterfront property. If I could afford waterfront property, I'd build a house there. I can't afford anything but an alley, because that's where I live.[1475.73][1475.73][laughter]
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?[1481.13][1481.13][applause]
Larry Jones, Port Huron. I just want to say that, you know, being investors from downtown, we support the Transit Center at the McMorn. You know, they say a parking garage, a parking structure, you know, it's a sprawled-out parking structure right now, which, you know, I agree with the maintenance repair items and the cost that it's costing the city. So if we've got somebody that's going to take and put a parking garage there, and a green space, and make it all new, I think it's great, you know, for the, as far as for all the points that the grant is taking in, we have McMorn, we have the college, we have the aging, we have the city. So I think with all those points, and anything that we've, that I have heard for that site, whether it's high-rise apartments, or a motel, everything is based around a parking garage or parking structure at this point, what I've heard anyway. I really think it'd be a benefit to McMorn, because I could sure see grants, you know, in the future with a walkway over into McMorn. I think that's going to, you know, bring more people into that structure. I can really see the excitement of downtown, and I really feel that the downtown is really going to grow over the next two years, and I think that's going to help. If you go to any city, Chicago, I mean, it's, you know, that's a larger city, but you have buildings, we're just in Cincinnati even, it's, I know it's a larger community, but you have high-rises, and you have parking structures, because you have to park. So, yeah, I just think, you know, I think it's going to be a great benefit for the city.
Thank you.[1591.48][1591.48][applause] Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council under public audiences?[1601.13][1601.13][end of transcript]
Anthony America, Port Huron. Councilman Fisher should be applauded for bringing the federal grant to our city. Let's give him support and honor. Councilman Muller should be applauded for not giving the city's money away. Councilman Miller, it's a shame you're not running in the election. I would have voted for you. Also, since we have a new police chief, there is a remarkable sense of community goodwill towards the city and the people by the police department. Haven't seen that or felt it for years, but it's there.[1663.83][1663.83][applause] The best is yet to come for our city and its people. We are indigenous Americans, we are white, we are black, we are rich, we are poor, we are gay, and we are straight. We are believers, and we are non-believers. Let's work together for the common good. Thank you.
David Ellingwood, from Port Huron, Michigan. I totally am for the new garage-bus hybrid building there, and for the green area, and people that are disabled do need some kind of facility other than depending on automobiles, because as the fuel, as oil gets more and more expensive, there'll be, people that aren't disabled will be in the same boat that we already are as disabled people, not being able to drive, unless you have a friend that owns a car or that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1745.86][1745.86][applause] Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council?
Good evening, city administrators, councilmembers. My name is Sharon Bender. I live on South Boulevard in Port Huron, and I'm just here to reiterate my support for the Blue Water Transits New Center, and to say that I wholeheartedly support it. I just think that we all want to always go with our eyes open when we embark on something new, and that we needed to know what things we need to look out for. I also would hope that at some point, we will see a hotel on top of that area and adjacent to McMorn, because I believe McMorn should- to McMorn, because I believe McMorn should be the convention center. It shouldn't be anywhere else but right in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council this evening? Declare public comment closed, and we will move on with the agenda, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, councilmember Fisher. Is there a second?
Support.
Mayor pro Tem Miller will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. On the consent agenda, there were confirming, it was confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total of $2,920 for removal of obnoxious weeds or unlawful growths or blighting factors. Acknowledge City Cab of Port Huron's name change and ownership restructuring to Blue Water City Cab Incorporated. Recognizing Starlight's parent club as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Port Huron. Confirmed and approved the appointment of Robert J. Funk and reappointment of Tim Ward to the Tax Increment Finance Authority for terms to expire September 14, 2015. And gave the second reading and enactment of an ordinance under Chapter Eight Animals, Article Two Dogs for the purpose of correcting misdemeanor penalties previously provided for an ordinance number 1326. And that takes us back to resolution number one.
Is supporting the concept of the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission's Bus Transfer Facility Project.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Muller, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor pro Tem Miller, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Muller.
I would just like to say thanks to the administration for adding the Sharon Bender amendment to the language.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make any comments on this? Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
I think it's just important for people to know that we're not actually approving the bus station to go in McMorn parking lots. It's just to give them the go-ahead to go ahead and start looking at designs and that. And I think that's, people need to know that.
Yes. Any further discussion?
We'd like to thank council if you all decide to support this so we can move forward for an addition to our community. And again, I did a presentation again today to a group in town and kinda showing some of the issues, some of the things we're looking at, and site selection and what's going on, a little more detail on the grant. So again, hopefully this'll be a $10 million improvement to our downtown area.
Yes. Anybody else? Will take a vote?
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
We'll move on to resolution number six.
Is authorizing a charter amendment proposal be submitted to the voters on February 28, 2012, that would prevent a city council member from becoming employed by the city as an administrative officer until two years after their termination of service on the city council? This resolution was requested by councilmember Lewandowski.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Fisher, second. Discussion?
Mayor Rep, if I may have a legal question. Is protocol to approve this and then send it to the attorney general and the governor's office, or is it to be sent to the governor's office, attorney general's office, get their approval of the amendment they were suggesting?
At this point, it would be a three-step process. One is if you approve it tonight, and I believe it would have to be five out of seven would have to vote for it. And then the next step would be it would be submitted to the attorney general for approval by the state. And if it passes that approval, then it would be placed on the ballot for the citizens to vote on.
Does it have to be approved before a council can vote on it, though?
No. You mean approved by the attorney general's office? No, I don't believe so. It has to be approved by the attorney general's office before it goes to the voters. So this is just...
Before the voters, before council can move to put this before the voters. Seems like we're doing this backwards, like it should've been approved by the attorney general's office, and then council would say that once it's been approved, then we get the council wanting to move it forward, then they would put it on the ballot.
No, I think it is a three-step process, and it does have to be approved. You are right, it has to be approved before it goes to the voters.
Just one of steps, one and two are being reversed.
I don't believe so. I can double-check on that, but I don't believe so.
We could have the clerk confirm that, but I know from being the clerk before that this is the process. You have to have the council approve it first, or the attorney general will not even look at it. Is there further discussion? No one?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Muller.
I just kinda find it kinda humorous that we would do this after voting last week to extend councilmember Fisher's approval of a council position, changing the rules and doing it, not giving the same ability to the city manager to pick somebody here. For instance, if Mr. Miller and Mr. Fisher were to apply for a city they're gonna position, not giving the city manager the opportunity to appoint them. I also find that if councilmember, I've never got a call about this, and talking to you, you've never got a call about it, it wasn't brought up at the, as Ms. Coon said, it never came up during the charter amendment. And so, I guess if Mr. Lewandowski is so concerned about, I would, and it's not an emergency-type situation, I would say that, I would suggest that he go get the thousand signatures and put it on the agenda like anyone else. I'll be voting now.
Is there any other discussion? I guess I would just like to say, if anybody else has a comment, but I guess I've started now.
Go ahead.
So I'll jump in there. I'm not gonna vote for it because actually I, my reasons mostly have to do with it. We just finished the charter revision. And of course, I believe in that process. I was part of it when it first started. And I think if we start nitpicking the charter apart now when it's the ink's barely dry, that sends the wrong message. There was a lot of people who took a lot of time going through the charter and looking at different things. And so I guess at this particular time, I don't think we should be readdressing those issues unless it was something that was very, very crucial. So I'm not going to support this at this time.
I guess, I just had a question for councilmember Lewandowski, because this came up and I saw it on there. And I guess shame on me, I didn't call you and ask you about this. But I was wondering if you could explain your thought process, what brought you to submitting this? Because it's quite a bit to submit it. It's a lot of work to do this.
Yeah, it would take more time. I know I don't have the votes to pass, so I mean, I will explain a little bit. There was some issues, obviously, with people that applied, and it's caused some problems within the city government body here, and some angst against other members of council and maybe even some people in management, and that's why I've asked for it. For the simple reason, I see, I could go further into detail, but I know I don't have the votes to get it passed tonight, so.
Is there any other discussion? From anyone?
Mayor Rep, did we answer Donna's question?
I think so, because basically she wanted to know why, so.
Then I would just add, I think two years may be a long wait, but I would wonder if sometime in the future, probably the next council, might wanna consider that if someone wanted to apply for a higher position, either at the time of application or at the time of, if they make it to the final interview process, at that point, they should resign their seat so that they don't have undue pressure on the city manager as he's trying to make a decision of who he's going to hire. That would be my only question is, do we wanna look at something like that in the future?
Any other discussion? Will take the vote?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Muller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
No.
Councilmember Archibald?
No.
Councilmember Fisher? Mayor Rep?
No.
We'll move on to ordinances number one.
It's being given its second reading and enactment, and is an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 offenses of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of correcting certain misdemeanor penalties previously provided for an ordinance number 1325.
Now, this is the one that needs the additional... Well, I just wonder if somebody can make the motion before I ask for the motion, as amended.
So moved.
Then we don't have to do a two-step process there, we'll just do it all in one fell swoop. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yeah. Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Muller.
Can you explain it to me? I don't, I didn't catch it the first time, it was explained earlier, and I'm missing it here. What are we, are we adding, are we adding this, or what are we adding?
Okay, it's the new one that's...
Pause amendment to ordinance number one.
Right, the only thing you'll be changing is the heading to Section 34-140. Right now, it says assault and battery. We are being asked to change it to assault, assault and battery, and domestic violence.
Okay, and that's what I thought you said, but I didn't see 140 on the...
Right, at the time of this, it was suggested that no changes be made to that section.
But I don't see Section 140.
It's on the very first page, right where your finger was. It says no changes between those two sections at the very bottom of the page.
Okay, all right.
It would've appeared between there.
All right. Thank you. I understand it now.
Okay. Any further discussion? Will take the vote.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
That concludes our agenda. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight?
Go ahead, sure. I just, I could speak more next week, next council meeting, but just wanna express my gratitude for administration. I think you got an extremely qualified professional staff, see John and Todd and Bob and Chief there, and Kim and Bob and Julie. Just thank you guys for your great professional service and support and information, and you guys are top-notch, and it's been a real privilege for me, once again, to have served in this city council and represent the city. But the city's fortunate to have really good, quality, top people. And I admire you, and I've come away more than once going, wow, we got good people. I just wanted to publicly thank you guys for your professionalism and quality that you provide to the city. I don't think it's always appreciated. So thank you very much. And to the citizens, I just thank you for entrusting me, once again, with this honor and privilege. We got a great city here, got a lot of problems. We got a great city, and it's been a real joy for me. You'll probably see my face show up again someday, but at this point, it just felt like it was time for a break personally. And so I just wanna thank everybody personally for the support and their involvement in this community and making it a better place. So thank you very much.
And I just wanna thank the citizens of Port Huron. It's, I've had the honor and the privilege and been very blessed to be able to serve my community for the past 10 years on city council. Again, like councilmember Miller, it feels like the time to go. I made the decision about two years ago that this would be my last term, actually looking forward to Monday evenings with the family and being able to do some fun things. My son turns 16 this week, and my daughter just turned 14. And I'll be able to get to some projects and things that I promised for them. But again, this is a wonderful community, and again, I am very humbled and blessed to have been able to serve my city and my community for the past 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, both of you. And you get time next meeting to say more. Is there anything else to come before the council? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Being adjourned.